Good evening, everybody. We're calling the meeting of January 24th of the Willett City Council regular meeting to order. So let's have... How about Supremity? Would you like to do the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy Woodley, poll roll.
Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Hornstein.
Here.
Doug Regis.
Present.
Mayor Strong.
Here.
So we will have time for public communications first, and the council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments are limited to three minutes so that everyone can... has an opportunity. If there's a whole lot of people on one subject, we might ask you to consolidate your comments. It's limited to matters that are under the jurisdiction of the city but not on the regular agenda. You'll have a chance to public comment on those items as we get to them. And public criticism of the city council boards and agencies will not be prohibited. In other words, it is allowed. But no action is taken during the public comment because only things that are agenda is... can be acted upon. We might be able to set it for a future agenda if that's appropriate. So is there anyone in the public who would like to address this?
Yes.
Yes, please, Dave Watts.
My name is Dave Watts, a local nursery man. And addressing the tree removal along the Main Street corridor, I know that there's a lot of people who are upset about that, including myself, and because none of us want to see our trees taken away. All of us want to have the aesthetic value of the trees that they provide for our community. One of the people I'm mad about is me. I planted eight of the 13 trees along with friends that are being removed in 1989. And I chose the wrong tree in the wrong space, and although we had many years, over almost 30 years, of enjoying their beauty, of their beautiful spring color with white flowers and then the fall color, the trees were the wrong species, like the Bradford pears. They break apart easy. Many of them have fallen. Pete Swanson in front of his place had one of those oldest of the Bradford pears. Last summer, four of those branches fell. One hit a car, and I think the city got sued or something for that. And there was a father and a son sitting at a table eating the branch just missed. What I'm saying is many of those trees are beyond their age where they're a hazard, and so that's why many of them have been removed. The other trees being removed were for... they were stressed or health reasons and other structural problems where we could not allow... there's not space for them to be in either. Now, that said, I want to address something here to the council and say that this problem will reoccur over and over again unless the city becomes more proactive and has more planning in place. The city of San Francisco, for instance, has a tree advisory board that has professionals and laypeople on it that can help advise them, and they, of course, they have hired urban foresters and so forth. What the city needs here is hired professionals with a tree management plan to really address what trees need to go where. And I just want to say, which I've said many times, some of you are tired of me saying it, but trees need space is the central matter. They need soil space. Any tree that you see growing in our environment that is nice and big, it's getting soil. That's why it's getting large, okay? If it doesn't have that soil space, it doesn't. So when it's getting that soil space, of course, it's interrupting what? Our sidewalks, our utilities, and other things. And so it's not the tree's fault, it's the person, as myself, who plans and plants them. Those Bradford pears were planted in a two-by-two-foot cutout in the sidewalk. That's just not good. That's only... two by two by three feet is 12 cubic feet. A tree to get 16 inches at breast height diameter, to get a large tree, okay, needs 1,000 cubic feet of real earth to be healthy and thrive. Now, that's a 20 by 15 by three-foot area of soil now. Obviously, you can see the conflict and the difficulty of planting that in an urban environment. But it can be done. There's avenues to do it. I will again give to the council... I've given it to many people. If you could have them get this. It's tree guideline suggestions. I was so upset with myself for doing these problems over these years and seeing the result now, being here 30 years later, that I started studying. So I have my sources of people I've studied from. There's a wonderful book by James Urban. He's a fellow in the American Society of Landscape Architects. It's called Up by Roots: Healthy Soils and Trees in the Built Environment, meaning the urban environment. The book is that thing. There's science there that has to be followed, and the city's not doing it because you don't have staff, you don't have money, okay? I understand that. So the last thing I'll say here is I also like if the newspaper would like to have this. It's my 30 years of experience a little bit, very in the picture form, okay? The public needs to be educated, and I appreciate the council in giving, you know, the education it can. But we need more. It takes time. The last thing I'll say is this here. I was very frustrated with the Main Street Improvement Corridor Street program, okay? The reason was is that every meeting I went to, the trees and the landscaping really was secondary and not considered at all. What that corridor plan is essentially is traffic and vehicular and pedestrian safety, which is very, very important, okay? All the plan had is a conceptual idea of 120, five-by-10 holes in the sidewalk for 120 trees, okay? No real planning, no on-the-foot with a landscape architect or an urban forester or anyone saying, "This is a space that we really have in our town that a tree can survive and thrive." We need real planning. And as much as we needed the plan, and I understand that, you did a lot of work and a lot of monies into that and time and planning, but all the meetings were for, you know, "I want the excess here. I want my car to go here." Really, except for we want our beauty of trees. We all want the beauty of trees. It needs to be really planned for. And these sources here, which I keep giving out, haven't, okay? And there's experts that know this. So it's not just any arborist, it's not just any urban forester, not just any landscape architect. It's one who has the values that we all want to keep trees, really make it in our environment. And so I'm a little strong with it, but that's what we need to do. Otherwise, 30 years down the road, you're going to plant trees in these other cutouts, and you're going to get people... they're going to have to be removed, and you're going to get... our children are going to come in and be mad, mad, you know, at the council. And it's our issue. And I know it's not difficult to solve, okay? It's very, very, very difficult. So if the council can, you know, read that and consider a tree advisory and landscape because we want a beauty of flowers and stuff, too. Thank you.
Jerry?
Dave, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you. You know, when Larry and I walked the Main Street and you spoke with Caltrans, I mean, I'm not a tree guy. It would help to have someone like you there talking to their folks and getting that concurrence. And I know that you fought for a couple of trees they were looking at and gave us some good arguments to save some trees, too. So I appreciate that, and I liked having you there on the ground. And I've always appreciated all the work you've done with the city over the years.
Okay. Well, Jerry, thank you. Yeah. And we should say, that's 13 out of 40 trees. There was 40 trees on that strip from Highway 20 to where the high school was. We already lost the four... three of the cork trees and one other oak tree in front of the high school through miscommunication and so forth. In the back of my plan, long before the plan was done, I said, "Those cork trees must be saved. They were heritage trees." It got lost in the paperwork. And so anyway, I've been on both sides.
I want to add to what Jerry just said, too, is that not only your work on this as a volunteer, but all of the other work that you've done in the city, volunteering, planting trees, helping us out with, you know, in front of the Art Center. You have... you and Jenny have given the city a tremendous amount of your love and your effort, and it is very much appreciated.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, yeah, we enjoy it, and this is our community, and even if we move away, it'll still be our community, except for those two guys there. No.
Larry. Congressman.
I want to thank you very much for all the committees and the time we spent walking up and down the street and all this other stuff. But I did get water this time.
Yes.
And that's a real plus that we've never had before, and it didn't come that easy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations. No, that's all important. So I wish the city well. We haven't moved until we sell our property, but we are wanting to move closer to family so we can grow up with our grandkids. So anyway, we're still here, and thank you very much. It's a great community.
Thank you. Any other member of the public would like to speak on public comment matters? If not, we're going to go to the public matters that are next. And it is my great pleasure and honor to have this proclamation for Edie Cecarelli, who is about to turn 110. And I believe she's spent just about all of those 110 years here in Willets, and she is very beloved. So I'll read the proclamation, and then I understand she's not here in person. She will be on February 5th, her actual birthday. We will present this proclamation to her there as well. So it says, "A proclamation of the Willett City Council recognizing Edith Keenan Cecarelli as 110 years young. Whereas it is the privilege of the Willett City Council to acknowledge and honor you as you turn 110 years young, we would officially like to recognize that you have had the privilege of celebrating the most birthdays in Mendocino County. You were born in Willets, California on February 5th, 1908. And whereas at your upcoming birthday celebration on February 5th, you will be surrounded by friends and loved ones who all respect, love, and honor you. Your lifelong love of people has enriched all of those whose lives you have touched. And whereas your love for dance, walking, and having an occasional sip of wine has kept you young at heart. Now therefore, I, Mad Strong, Mayor of the City of Willets, do hereby extend our collective heartfelt congratulations to you, Edie Cecarelli, in wishing you a happy birthday and witness..." I'm going to have to sign it. So I believe Evelyn Priscico is here to accept this on behalf of Edie.
I don't know where I should be here.
Anyway. Yes, thank you.
You know, there's only one thing that was kind of left out of this. I think it's important, it's her maiden name, which is Pricano.
Oh.
Yes, she does, Pricano.
Okay. Thank you. Well, if you could do another one before February 5th.
Certainly, we could do that.
So Kathy will do it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Evelyn.
Thank you.
With tender our love, and we will... I'd tend to be here on February 5th.
Oh, perfect. I would have brought her except for not going.
Oh, yeah.
She hasn't been sick in the nine years I've been with her, and so I'm not going to let this start now.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And this is a wonderful evening because we have three great people to honor. Dave Watts, Edie Cecarelli. And now it is my pleasure to introduce to our Willets community the newly selected city manager, Stephanie Garabant Sierra. And, you know, I just am so pleased that we have you as our new city manager incoming in a couple of months because you are very well qualified and you really feel like the right person for our community. It's more important than the qualifications, but it's good to have both. And you do. So would you like to...
Yes, it's... Madam Mayor, it's indeed a pleasure for me to also be able to present this staff report, which is the authorization for the city to enter into an employment agreement with Stephanie Garabant Sierra for the city management... for city management services. As you'll recall, Adrianne Moore resigned her position last fall, and shortly after that, the recruitment process began. That... we were assisted with that by Bob Murray and Associates, who is a professional recruiting firm. That resulted in 31 applications being received from across the western United States. It's really a testament to Willets because I've been involved with other recruitments that they... where they had to really scratch for applicants, but in this case, you've got 31 applicants coming from a variety of different locations. The 31 applicants were narrowed down to the eight of the most qualified, and six of those were actually interviewed by the city council. The city council has completed the negotiations with Stephanie, and the attached agreement is presented for your approval. A little bit about her background, it's fairly extensive. There's 14 years in the public sector. She's worked for the city of Oakland as... in a variety of capacities, including a risk manager. She's worked for the city of Alameda as the administrative services director. She most recently worked with Tracy as the assistant city manager. So you can see the breadth of experience she's had. She's actually had experience in both the public and private sector. She has a law degree from University of California at Berkeley, and for a different time, she's actually operated her own practice. So she knows the private sector as well. She has a bachelor's degree in political science from UC Santa Barbara. The negotiations resulted in a contract. The specifics are outlined in the staff report. For the general public, it's a salary of $120,000, an agreement... initial agreement term of three years. Participation in the city's benefit program commensurate with benefits received by other management employees. A severance package containing a lump sum payment equal to six months' salary and benefits in the event the employee is terminated without cause. $6,000 to be used for a variety of different things that will assist her with her job, including equipment, automobile allowance, a technology allowance, and a membership payment in the International City Managers Association and the Municipal Management Association in Northern California. All of these are specified in detail in the contract, and it's with that that I'm pleased to be able to recommend the council adopt the enclosed resolution, which will appoint Ms. Garabant Sierra as the city manager, I should say, effective March 15th. And so you still will have me around for at least a couple of months to work with that transition and then approve the agreement as outlined in the attachment. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than glad to ask them. Obviously, she's here, may want to address you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So unless there's any questions of Bob's report, yes, I run.
Yeah. First of all, welcome aboard. And you're going to be very pleased to learn that we are a proactive council, and we ask questions and the devils and the details. So I have a few details that are devil-ing me that we have to discuss. Under Section 4, Paragraphes D and E and F, that brings in that $6,000 allowance. And as we discussed this in closed session the last time, it was my understanding that the $6,000 would be used to, well, as you laid out, car allowance, phone usage, professional development, and, you know, the dues and expenses. But there was also something... let's see, where was this? In Paragraph E, it talks about... well, the first paragraph. "The employer agrees to the extent is financially able and with city council approval to budget for and to pay for travel and subsistence expenses for employee for professional and office travel, meetings and occasions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." It sounds like that's a duplication of what's covered under Paragraph F.
If I can, Madam Mayor, I can try and clarify that. As you see in Item D, dues and subscriptions, it says, "Accept as provided in Paragraph F." And Paragraph F relative to membership dues is very specific, that the ICMA and MMANC dues are to be covered within that 6,000 amount. Item D is the same language that was in the previous manager's contract, and to clarify, there are other associations that the incoming manager may want to avail herself of, and it's not specific just to ICMA and MMANC. For instance, because her responsibilities are going to be relatively broad, she may choose to... she may choose to want to be a member of the Personnel Officers Association. Or another one is the National Planning Association. This kind of provides her the opportunity to participate or have those other memberships provided there is a budget for them. So that's... I can understand where we need to have... that needs to be clarified and could appear to be confusing, but I do believe that there is a distinction between the two.
All right. But am I the only one who remembers the conversation the way I put it, or was I incorrect? Anybody else?
I kind of remember the way we discussed it, the way Bob had explained it, that it would be budget-provided for some of the other things.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. The other one is in Section 5, Paragraph B, performance criteria. And I'm just curious, what are the criteria? When are they going to be developed? Who's going to do that? And how is that going to be done? I mean, that's like one of these open things that you're going to perform to criteria, and we can't tell you what they are at this point.
Well, if I can make a recommendation there, Madam Mayor, I would suggest, and it's quite typical with new managers coming in, that even in the very beginning, after you want to make sure that the incoming city manager has a chance to get a feel for things. Then I would suggest sitting down with her in a closed session because it's part of the eventual evaluation, and you can agree on what that criteria should be for that six... for six-month period, so you will have something to evaluate against.
Does that make sense to me?
Okay. Last thing. Since I am apparently... unless someone else has anything else to say, the only one who raised any questions on this, I would like to demonstrate my welcoming good faith and make a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city to enter into the agreement with Ms. Stephanie Garabant Sierra. Can I just call you Stephanie?
Absolutely.
Thank you. For city manager services.
I'd like to second, Councilmember Hornstein, some motion.
All right. I'd love to entertain any comments from the public that would like to speak on this item. Is there anybody who would like to throw in their two cents? We have, as you may imagine, have had a fair amount of time spent by the council with Stephanie and going over all of this in order to get to where we are now, which is a very gratifying moment to... I think we should vote on this, and then if there's no other comments, and then greet Stephanie and have just a moment, maybe a couple of minutes, for the newspapers to take pictures if they'd like to.
Did Kathy bake a cake?
We are going to wait until she actually has her first meeting.
So call for the vote. Kathy?
Councilmembers Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yep.
Doug Regis?
Yes.
Mayor Strong? Yes. Enthusiastically.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, that's welcome aboard.
I hope you're not superstitious, but you do realize that you're starting on the Ides of March.
Should probably be where. Do either of our newspapers want to have some pictures? Do you want us with all five of those council members?
Probably would be a good idea.
I think that would be nice.
It's an opportunity, maybe, this way.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Stephanie, why don't you?
Thank you so much.
Why don't you come up... before we take the pictures, why don't you come and say a few words? If you'd like. I will. Sorry. We need coaching.
I'm just going to say a few words because I have had this cold that everyone has had, and so my voice is a little challenged. I just wanted to thank the city council for considering me and granting me this honor. I am very excited to start working with the city of Willets and with all of you and fulfilling your vision and working with staff. And I just want to say, Willets is a really special place, and I'm so excited to work here. I... when I was considering this job, I researched it very thoroughly, and everyone who you talk to about Willets, no matter where they are, when you mention Willets, they get a sparkle in their eyes of "Willets. That's a great city." And I have to say, being in this business for a long time, I've not come across that kind of city before where everyone says that, and everyone has a Willet story. And I'll share some of them with you as the months and years go by, but everyone's got a Willet story, and it's always a great story. So thank you so much. I really appreciate the honor.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. So where should these photos take place?
You should probably adjourn the meeting for the purpose of photographs.
Not adjourned, but recessed.
Yeah, a recess of two or three minutes. Let's make it short. Okay. The next item is our consent calendar. We have on it the city council meetings, minutes of January 10th, and dispersment journals.
I'd like to move the consent.
I second it.
Second. Any comments from the council members? Any comments from the public on the consent calendar? And if not, I guess we can do a lie vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes. There... I don't even think there are any informational reports today. The right to appeal. If any persons are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council, they have the right to review that decision by a court. And cities adopted Section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which limits to 90 days the time within which decisions can be judicially challenged. Commissions and agencies and authorities. We are now going to... how do you do that? You adjourn as the city council and meet as the planning commission and the successor agency. So we are transitioning into our role as... first, as the planning commission. And we have an item, which is discussion of possible action on an application for a minor subdivision for Wayne Regina over just off of Coast Street. Jim, are you going to be...
Actually, Madam Mayor, I'll provide the staff report. I'm going to pinch-hit for Dusty tonight, who's out ill. And if there are any questions, John and I, John Sherman and I, will attempt to answer those for you. Summary of the request. The applicant, Wayne Regina, is proposing to divide... subdivide an approximate 1.26 acres into a 0.70 acre parcel and a 0.56 acre parcel. The property is located on the south side of Coast Street, opposite its intersection with Mill Street. A 30-foot-wide easement will be provided along the westerly side of Proposed Parcel 2 and will be improved with a 26-foot-wide fire access road with a turnaround to meet Little Lake Fire Department requirements. Both parcels are accessed by a private driveway from Coast Street. The applicant will install individual water, sewer, and electrical utilities to the Proposed Parcel 2. There is an existing single-family home on Proposed Parcel 2 that is already served by utilities. No future improvements are identified on Proposed Parcel 2. What you need to do is conduct the public hearing and then determine what actions are to be taken. I did want to note that we did get communication regarding a resident on the front part of the subdivision in the existing house that is... is that right off the coast... South Coast? the subdivision in the existing house that is, is that right off the coast, South Coast and?
It's right on that street.
Right on the, on the street. That is served by a, present by a private road. It's 20 feet long and has an easement for it to go up to 40 feet. And the resident was concerned about who takes care of that road's responsibility for maintenance during the, during both, during the construction and after the construction is completed. He's concerned about some damage, potential damage to that private road. I discussed this with Dusty briefly, and actually, he suggested that if the council is of an interest, the council could add a condition. The condition would be condition, special condition one, just conditioning the project, the subdivision approval, to require the developer to enter into a road maintenance agreement with the property owners that are part of that subdivision. That's a good idea.
I left a message with Dusty and didn't realize he wouldn't get it. I should have listened. But I, I was wanting to clarify. It says the applicant will install individual water sewer, electrical utilities to serve the proposed parcel two, but parcel two is where there's an existing house with utilities.
Probably should say parcel one, but I believe the property owner is here. Is that, yes. Maybe he would be able to address that.
Because if you look at, can you address that? Come, come up to the front, please. And if you could state your name, that would be helpful.
My name's Wayne Regina. I'm a contractor, and all the utilities are existing already.
For both parcels?
For both parcels.
Okay. So it would be good to just clarify that, that's not?
I think, you know, it is in the staff report. Unless there is something in the conditions that requires something different, it would just be a correction to the staff report.
I have a question.
Yes.
All right, so according to the map that I'm looking at, there is an existing house on parcel one, correct?
All right.
And it's showing a house up near the, up near Coast Street. Does that exist as well? That's not part of the subdivision?
No.
But is there a house there now, up closer to Coast Street?
Yeah.
That's the one that?
Yeah, the easement, yeah.
Okay, so basically, what you're doing is, parcel two is, is empty right now, and at some point, a house will be built there.
Right.
So I guess the fact that the, I'm looking at the flood map, and I'm wondering what all the colors mean, because it looks like there's a, the blue zone AE runs right through the center of the, of parcel one, and I, I guess it's moot because there's all, it's been, you know, there's been a house there for several years already. So, but, but just for curiosity, what does that? John, could you explain what the floodway, what the flood map tells me?
Yeah, I'd be happy. The existing house that's closest to the creek or at the very back of the lot.
Right.
The back of that house is roughly adjacent to the floodway line.
Okay.
The flood plain extends through that building site and up to this new lot, barely into this new lot, but doesn't, it doesn't actually get into this lot far enough to get into what will be the building site on this lot. But that, that is the flood plain, not the floodway.
The flood plain. So is there an issue with flood? I know the difference between a floodway and a flood plain, but is there an issue? Again, obviously, it's this old news, because the house has been there for many years in the flood plain.
If the house were actually in the flood plain, if the footprint of the building itself were in the flood plain, it would have to be built to FEMA standards, which would require that a finished floor be elevated to one foot above base flood elevation, and the foundation have flood vents in it that would allow floodwaters to go back and forth without hydraulically pushing the foundation around.
But I assume that was done when the house was built?
The, the house in the back, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been verified. That's got a flood elevation certificate on it. As I have determined in looking at the current maps, I don't think this, the proposed house will require those in, in that it's not in the flood plain.
It's in parcel two, you're right. The parcel two is out of the floodway and the flood plain and everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, even if the flood plain did extend into the building site, it would be a matter of building it to those FEMA regulations. That was, that would be the only real consequence there.
Thank you, John.
I had a question. John, maybe this would be something that, I was hoping Chris would still be here for this part, but to the condition of a 26-foot wide fire access road along, with approved turnaround, should be completed to satisfaction of Little Lake Fire Department. The question I had is whether they designate this a fire lane or not. And if so, I'm assuming that the property owner at their expense would install any fire lane signage needed.
Yes, yes, but we'd have to determine, I haven't determined whether it's, actually meets that requirement or not. We have talked with Chris, and there is adequate area on the, on the back lot to turn his equipment around, so there, there's no question about whether or not.
I guess the concern I have is that we have a tendency to, you know, put houses in, which is fine, I want that, but, you know, what happens today and 10 years from now, when the new owners that move in decide to have a party and park along that way, and then there's a fire, and so I can't get in.
Right.
Rather it be posted and allow for towing or whatever we need to at that point, so the fire department can get in and do their job.
Our municipal code's very specific, and our city standards are very specific as to when it actually meets the requirements, or meets the need to, to be designated as a fire access lane. And essentially, what it says is that, that driveway has to be over 150 feet long to require that.
Okay.
All right. So you would like to add a condition regarding the maintenance of the?
Right. That would be staff's recommendation, or it would just, it would be added to the list of conditions as special condition number one.
And regarding if it, if it does turn out to be a fire lane, et cetera. I, I don't want the city to have to bear the burden of having the public works put up signs at some point because it's a, it's a private property.
That's, we can recall that in the code, that's owners' responsibility.
So do I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor, I think it's a public hearing, so you actually have to?
Maybe I didn't. So is there anybody in the public that would like to address us regarding this minor subdivision? Not then, and there's no further question or discussion from the council members? Someone like to make a motion to approve this?
I move that we approve this item.
I'll second it.
With, with the added condition. Okay, moved and seconded. I think we should have a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Transky?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Remembering, yes, America.
Yes, mayor manager. That's good. Okay, now we're?
Thank you for building our city. We need more housing.
And now we are reconvening as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, which is a very complicated area, but I would ask either Bob and/or Celia to?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll give you a brief report. As, as the council is, is aware, the redevelopment agency existed in the city of Willets for a number of years, but was dissolved by state action, I think it was 2012. It was some time ago now. And since that date, the, the state has outlined some, a process to ensure that all agencies, basically, that have been dissolved, pay their obligations with the remaining, the tax increment necessary to pay, pay those obligations. And the dissolution process required that the cities, or the cities identify themselves as the successor agency, and that's why you're actually acting as the successor agency. And your job is really to take a look at the recognized obligation payment and to authorize it to move forward to the oversight board. Just so you know, the oversight board is scheduled to meet tomorrow, and then the recognized obligation payment would then be submitted to the state in time to meet its February, the February 1st deadline. This is almost by rote at this particular point. We're getting to the tail end of the dissolution process. The oversight board probably will meet for a final time, I believe, this next, tomorrow, because through the, by the end of the year, the county actually assumes the role of the oversight agency. And attached is, is what the recognized obligation payment looks like. It's really pretty straightforward. The only debt that is outstanding is bonded indebtedness, and payments are made twice a year. Those are the amounts you see in the attachments. There is a little bit, there's a little bit of staff processing assigned to each of those years. That's where you get the $40,000 on that particular line item shown twice, and equalling $80,000. This, I should indicate, is an estimate of what it costs for staff processing, and that includes the, we have a consultant that actually does this for us on our behalf, puts the ROP together. And what will happen is that the actual time is tracked against the estimate, and when we get to a point of the, finalizing the, the final obligation, the real expenditures for staff time will be recognized, and then the ROPS will be further adjusted at a later date. But I'm available to answer any questions you might have regarding it, and Celia is also here to answer any questions you may have.
I just wanted to clarify, I actually asked Celia this, that there's a blank, essentially blank page that says Exhibit A, but the Exhibit A is actually the one below that that's horizontal. So it's just that the, the information fit on the horizontal page, and so there's an extra page in there, so that, that's just to clarify that. I guess, Ron.
All right, just to add a little more to it, I've been on, I've served on the ROPS committee since its inception, and it has simplified quite a bit. In the early years, we met twice a year, I believe, right? And, and there was a whole long list of, of items that had to be covered and, and discussed. And to the credit of the city of Willets, we had one of the easiest ROPS, which is Re- Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule. We had one of the easiest ones in the county, maybe in the state, because we were very prudent about spending this redevelopment money. There were some jurisdictions that used the redevelopment money for just about everything, including payroll. And now, when, when, when the redevelopment act ended, they had to make up for all this money that they had spent unwisely. So, you know, I'm proud of, of our city here that we've, we've done what we had to do, and we kept it under control. The, there's an $80,000 charge that's, that's being imposed in this statement to cover expenses for the city through the year. The law says that we can charge up to $250,000 a year, and we have never done that. But we're covering our costs, so this is, this is good. So it is a pretty straightforward kind of a thing, and I thought that the last time we met, it was going to be the last time we're going to meet, because I believe, I thought that, you know, we sort of went into automatic overdrive, and, but you're saying that from now on?
Well, the, the council has a, has an option, although we would have had to exercise this a little bit earlier than today's date, to come up with a final ROPS.
Okay.
But you're so close to the end of the actual legislated or legal period that it's just, staff would recommend that you just finish it out this way, rather than incurring the cost to come up with a final ROPS.
I believe 2024 is the end of it?
It could be, but from 2018 on, the, the oversight will actually be provided by the county. The county will, has its own oversight board, and all of the local oversight boards will simply go away. So, and the good part about that is, obviously, we won't be incurring those, those costs anymore.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone in the public want to address us on the question of the recognized obligation payment schedule drops? If not, and there are no further comments or questions?
I move the resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, and do we, we probably need a roll call on this one as well.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Transky?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right. So we are now reconvening as the city council, and we will hear our city managers' reports. And I guess, starting with a request or proposal on the watershed.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is a, a request to release an RFP for firms that would conduct actually two tasks, the salvage of burned timber and, and dining timber out on the watershed resulting from the fire, and the development of a reforestation plan. I don't need to tell the council that, obviously, the watershed is, is a significant asset for the city. It, it is where the bulk of our, our water comes from, and off 3,136 acres that actually belongs to the, to the city and actually the water enterprise. The property consists of mixed conifer forest, oak woodlands, and grasslands and scrub. As you all know, we had the fire, or you had the fire in October. It actually, that fire, the Redwood Complex fire, actually impacted almost 45% of that property in some way up there. But the most burnt was about 482 acres. There's a map that is attached, and that's the area that is outlined in, in yellow. There are a couple of different areas. And that's the area that is subject to the salvage routine, or the salvage work. Within that area, there are a lot of trees that are actually down, and then there are a lot of trees that have been injured to the point where it's not likely that they're going to survive. And now, what will happen is, obviously, if, if, and the council has the option of doing nothing, which is not what I would recommend, but if you do nothing, then what would happen with the, the trees that have been impacted is that they will just contribute to the fuel load up there, and there's a possibility, the potential for an additional fire is, is likely to occur. The other point with the deterioration of the forest as it is up there as a result of the fire, it does open the door for insect infestation, which can start there and actually go on to affect healthy trees. So you want to take action to try and preserve the watershed as best as possible. In November, staff met with members of the North Coast Resource Management Firm that actually made us aware that a salvage operation would be possible, and it would be beneficial to the city. It would eliminate, deal with the problems created by the city. There is also a marketable value to the salvage of timber, and that marketable value, based on their estimate, is about, the net value is about $400,000. That's after all the work has been done. Staff, after meeting with NCRM, thought about it and thought at best, this is the type of work that really needs to go out competitively in the event that there is another firm out there that, or two or three that might be interested in conducting the work. The other part of this is, is the development- The other part of this is, is the development of a reforestation plan, obviously. Once you have the trees out of there, you do want to reforest the area and again, be a good steward for the area in that that will enable the watershed to maintain its pristine condition. So consequently, I'm recommending that the, I've drafted an RFP, that RFP is attached. I'm recommending that the council authorize the release of the RFP. The RFP would go out, it's 30 days to be out in the public. At the end of that process, we'd go through a selection process and then return with the proposal from the firm that we thought was the most qualified. Work would be done most likely during the summer. The permitting on this would be through CAL FIRE because it's considered to be an emergency operation, actually the cleanup of the burned areas. And so CAL FIRE actually would have a, a lot of the permitting and oversight and, as well as ensure that whatever SEQA requirements are, are necessary. I've been up there twice, most recently just a couple of days ago with Scott Herman. Scott's here, who is probably the most knowledgeable about the, the watershed and he, he's available for any questions of him that, that you might have. But staff is recommending that you review the request for proposal, give us direction on any changes you might want to make to it and then authorize it for release. And that concludes my staff report.
All right. So are there questions or clarification of this staff report? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Ron. In November, I had the opportunity to go get an aerial view thanks to one of the people that own the plane up at the airport and I was surprised at how much damage had been done. And one of the questions I have is, I understand that we're going to get, that we could potentially receive $400,000, which we could, we could use for the reforestation, but are, is there any other funding that we could seek due to?
There are other kinds of grants that are available for this kind of reforestation and that's something that maybe we could ask Jim to follow up on. And, you know, you'd always have to, the, the good thing about this is that whomever is successful in getting the RFP will do the plan. Then you'll have a, a good estimate as to what that reforestation is going to cost. And if you're going to need grant funds to supplement that, you would be able to move forward with it once you know what that, what that parameter was, the actual cost for the reforestation.
I just want to make sure that, that, I mean, $400,000 sounds like a lot of money, but if it's not enough to do the re-
Sure.
Yeah, the project. I want to make sure that we're following up on that. So that would just be mine. Two cents. Ron?
We did discuss this yesterday at the Water and Wastewater Committee meeting and, and at the time, I pointed out, I want to do it again, some may not be aware that the watershed has always provided marketable lumber for the city over the years. We used to do a timber harvest every, I want to say 10 years maybe, five or 10 years and it's been, what'd you say, 2001, Scott?
2001.
Yeah, so we're talking, you know, 15, 16 years since the last one. And it's like any other operation, it's, it's lumber, you know, we're in lumber country here. And, and this is money, good money, that would certainly benefit the, the Water Enterprise budget, which we, we could use. So as we discussed yesterday, I suggested, you know, I wanted to know if we could put a timber harvest component into this, into this resolution, but I was told that it would take too long at this point. But I just want to make sure that sometime in the future, in the near future, that we do come back and address this again to the extent that we could hire a company to do a timber, a, a, a timber harvest plan and to see what kind of revenue the city can realize. I know it's going to be more than $400,000 the next time we do it.
Okay, Jerry and then Larry, same.
I, I was in on one of the briefings back in November and having talked to Scott and the folks there, they had mentioned potentially looking at grants as part of the process. Obviously, they were there either to solicit the, I guess, the RFP component or, and/or maybe even do part of the work or be a part of that, depending on how they favored. And obviously, our concern at the time was they would have to go out as an RFP. But I think the big concern, and I think it's one that Scott brought up to staff and myself at the time, was that the importance of the watershed and it being healthy and this process occurring under kind of an emergency basis and therefore the permitting is a little more streamlined in this case. Obviously, not for the timber harvest that, or, sorry, but for the purposes of making sure that things stay healthy up there and obviously that there would be some money to be gained from recovering the, the timber that was down and/or timber that needed to come down because it was not a, so.
Larry?
I'm going to go at it from a little different point of view. I think that the first thing we have to do is clean out the, the bad trees and the ones that are going to give the insects a, a chance to get a hold in that area. And that's not what we want. So if you're going to have a harvest plan, it's going to take you approximately two years to do it because it has to go through a couple of cycles. And you have to have the owls and all this kind of stuff that go on, but it takes about two years to do it. And this needs to be out this year and when it's, it's out, then we can maybe go and look at it from a different point of view. But the main thing is to get rid of, of the debris that is in there now and reforest it this year and we can get it under an emergency plan and you can do it this year. And that's the thing that you need to really look at. And, and I can't emphasize too much that these trees that are down and some of them that are dying are just like a vacuum. They just suck up the bugs and stuff and, and it's just going to go into the rest of the forest that's in there. And so I, I think that to do this, the way that it is put into the agenda is really the right way to go at it. And the reforestation is, is really the key item to the whole thing in my estimation. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you don't, do you have, okay, and I'd like to open the public hearing on this issue. If anyone would like to speak to us about this request for putting out a, as we're putting out a request for proposal on the salvage and restoration of the damaged area from the fire. And it doesn't sound like anyone from the public. And Scott, do you have anything you want to add to?
Not really, it's just, it's, our watershed is pristine, rated pristine. It would be nice to keep it that way and not spread that. Again, they, they approached us and, of the goal, the person that approached us is a lifelong resident here and concerned.
Could, could you ask Scott to come up there so the audience and the, could hear it? Not us so much, but the TV audience. Thank you, Scott. I need you to be up here in the limelight, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just going back, our watershed is, is rated as, as pristine. We really don't have any influence above us, which is essentially the determination. And overall, they approached us, there's some other, obviously, current areas that they are, in, have been asked to, to do as well. And overall, to me, for the long longevity of our, of our watershed, we need to act on this and it's, it's actually going to be pretty fast. They give you about a year from when the bugs start attacking. So this is when, it's going to be a streamlined process if it does go through.
And then it sounds like several people would like us to put on our future agenda looking at some other types of timber harvest, but that's not in this package.
Right, that's correct. But certainly it's something that should most likely be brought back and looked at in detail.
A longer process for that. So, yes, Jerry?
Well, I just want to say I want to move staff's recommendation.
I'll second his.
I second that.
Supreme to beat you to it.
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and thank you, Scott. So we don't need a voice vote on this and I think we could just, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Other reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor, a couple of verbal reports. As you know, staff is working on the rent, mobile home rent stabilization issue. Though the, in early December, there was quite a group of people here and expressed an interest in seeing the council pick that up. You provided direction to do so. It's taking staff a little bit longer than we anticipated in putting that report together, but I am working on it. I expect it'll be back on the, on the council's agenda on February 28th. That, and I've also communicated that to both the tenants as well as the owners and they're agreeable to that. And they've been actually very responsive, both sides, in providing additional information to staff. The other item that I wanted to let you know about is, staff is working on the mid-year and the mid-year review I'm anticipating we'll bring back at the council's next meeting. We'll try not to make that too tedious because it's February 14th, but Valentine's Day.
Just serve chocolate and we'll be fine.
Yeah. And, you know, in terms of, I have, what I think is good news to share with you, I met with Scott Warnock today. He's doing very well and it looks like in the coming weeks, we'll be working with him about his actual return to work. So just wanted to update you on that as well.
That was good, yes.
Yeah, that's great.
That's it?
That's it? Okay. So moving on, the administration, the attorney?
Uh, not really, although I've been working with Bob about moving forward with, with proposing an excise tax on our campus ordinance. And I'm going to do some further research on it and provide that to Bob and we're probably approaching you about the procedure on that and seeking your directions soon.
Because there's a long lead time that you have to have, yeah.
Well, this would have to be on the November ballot this year. So when is the deadline for having this prepared?
August 1st.
Pardon?
August 1st.
August 1st.
It has to be there, huh?
So, so we have to deal with this before the end of July, actually. Okay.
So it's a good thing that you're starting.
Working on it now.
Working on it, okay, great. And city clerk?
Madam.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Larry.
Thank you, I thought we were going with the hands up first.
Yes, we are, I just didn't see you.
Okay, I want to thank you for doing that because I've thought about this several times. And are we going to be able to get it in on the November ballot if we start it now?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, and we really need that. I mean, this is what everything is going for, for the last year is going for this tax. Anyhow, thank you very much for bringing it up.
You're welcome.
All right. City clerk, do you have anything to bring to us?
Couple quick things. Glad you're coming, Lord. Don't miss Bob. I will be out for the next meeting, the February 14th meeting. There'll be five of us, I believe, that will be out. You'll be at a conference in Monterey.
No chocolate.
No, I'll make sure there's chocolate. So Dolores will be here for that meeting. And just a reminder that the city is hosting the Ring of Conference for the next two days, which is a big deal for us and it should go for that hitch.
All right.
Are we going to get a reduction on our insurance premiums because of that?
I'm hoping.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay. Finance, Celia left.
Nothing new there.
We did our ROPS already. Human resources, Karen?
Nothing today.
Nothing? Okay. Public safety, done.
Nothing today.
I know there was a lot going on.
Madam Mayor, council, again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Starting with personnel, not much has changed since the last time I spoke. We're now at the final stages of our background investigation with two police officers that, if it's successful, that'll put you totally up to strength with your sworn staff, especially if you have the return of your police chief eminent, everything will be looking good in that regard. A little curveball was thrown at the police department. As you know, there's four full-time dispatchers employed. We find that both of them in the month of February, or most of the month of February will, or two of the four will be out. So we have to get a little creative and we've, we've done so and it looks like we may be able to have a little bit of a relief for the remaining two plus the CSO with an outside agency contracting to help us with a little bit of the dispatching services. And we're hoping that it'll be at least cost neutral, if not a little cost effective as opposed to overtime. But the main thing that I look at is staff time and overtime burnout and that will help alleviate some of that during that rough period. So again, that'll probably be anywhere from two to six-ish weeks. Notice the ish, there's a little leeway there. As far as work product, you do have storms coming and the patrol officers are out there proactively making sure that hazards are mitigated and that the safety of the motoring public and community is utmost important to them. So they'll have their eyes out even when everybody's. And my final tidbit before I put on some questions, if you may have some. We did talk a little bit about crime and statistics and all that. I was hoping to come here to further the conversation a little bit. I'm not, my stance is the same. You have a very active police department. They're very busy. For a small community, it's quite surprising to me. Doesn't mean it's all busy for bad stuff, it's just they're very busy. But I would suggest for whoever comes up to the podium in the near future to maybe talk about your yearly crime stats that are submitted to the, the Department of Justice. I think it would be eye-opening, it would be refreshing to see exactly what kind of crimes you do have in this community and how it compares to previous years. And I'm assuming that had been done in years past, but probably not a bad thing to do.
Okay. Any questions for that?
When can we expect the sandbag station to open up? Are you familiar with the?
That would be a public question.
Okay, maybe that's a question.
Yeah, it usually waits until the very, very last minute. Well, if we predicted it's coming, you know, like this was a good storm, the creeks rose, but nothing was over, then we'll put, we'll put it out. Don't do it too early because then you get the freelancers that come and take it.
Well, today we got a, we got a pretty heavy downpour of rain at one point and.
Yeah, we were patrolling the area and nothing came close to even.
Could I add something, Bob? I know in the past our public works and work and obviously with the police department and the city manager and they work with the county OES folks. So when there's a big, Willets, usually the water goes up and goes down rather quickly. That's the one consistent we've had over the years. But when they know that there's several storms back to back that won't allow for that, that's usually when the sandbag station comes out.
I was just curious if we had a, a planned date, but it sounds like it's an as-needs situation.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And community development?
Madam Mayor, obviously Dusty is not here, but. Madam Mayor, obviously Dusty is not here, but Jim Robbins does have the report to give regarding the resolution approving the grant, and maybe, Jim, you could come to the podium and we, the council could entertain his presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Jim Robbins, a community developments specialist for the city. So, I'd like to request that the council consider and hopefully pass a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for a flood emergency response program grant. We have the opportunity to apply to the California Department of Water Resources for a grant in the category statewide flood emergency response grant program, which differentiates from those counties in the Delta region, northeast of the San Francisco Bay Area. And the grant funds could be used for, to pay for flood emergency response planning, training, and equipment, and specifically for aspects of the city's 10-year-old emergency operations plan. Flood-related parts of that plan could be addressed with this grant. And then we could also possibly pay for the flood planning maps that the, the department's Division of Dams is requiring of the city, that be completed by January 1st of 2019.
How does that relate to the negotiations that have gone on around the flood plane, the flood plane, you know, the John?
FEMA.
The FEMA designations, is it dubbed?
We'll have the explanation.
Yeah, but sort of no direct relationship. I mean, that's an emergency that happened, and FEMA comes in, and then Cal, OEP or OES, you know, FEMA pays 75%, and then the state pays another percentage for a declared emergency. This is for making plans and training for future potential emergencies that haven't happened yet. So, it's preparing for emergencies rather than reacting or responding to them.
Yes, Ron?
How much money will you be applying for?
Um, we're still working on that, but it would be between 200 and 250,000. A draft budget right now is at 237,000, and the map, the mapping is like over half of it.
Okay, so is there an upper limit to how much you can apply for?
There is, there is no, well, I think the total grant funding for the whole state outside of the Delta area is, I can't remember, five or 10 million dollars?
Million?
Million, like 5 million.
Not a lot.
So, I mean, community's much larger than ours. This is round three of the funding, and rounds one and two, communities much larger than ours have gotten between 100 and 200,000 dollars.
Oh, so.
Each.
So realistically, we're probably looking at receiving less than 100,000.
It's possible. It really depends on how the review committee responds to our request. Something new that has changed in this round is these new requirements for these flood plane maps. That just came out in the past like five or six months. So, if I had to guess, I would say that would make them more generous per applicant, but reduce the number of grants. So, it would make the grant more competitive, but more money per grant. But that's a complete guess.
Flood plane maps, didn't we just go through that with FEMA? Didn't they create flood plane maps for us?
Different flood plane maps.
Different? How different?
Yeah, Jim's talking about dam inundation maps, and I'm talking about flood plane maps within the city.
Okay, so, so the focus of your grant application would be around the dam?
Dam inundation maps, and then also building a, an emergency response plan, a general emergency response plan for the city of Willets and for the valley and for the fire protection district.
Okay, so just so I'm clear here, your, your grant application would focus on, how should we call it, safety around the dam flooding, or failing, or overflowing, or flooding downstream of the dam, correct?
That would be the focus of the maps, as I understand it, and I knew very little about this two weeks ago.
And in addition?
But, but also any kind of flooding issues in the city limits.
Okay, that was the second part, okay.
Yeah, but the, but my understanding, limited understanding of the nature of the maps is those are focused on potential dam breaches, which is why the Division of Dams is requiring them.
Okay.
Jerry?
So, Scott, and you don't have to jump up here, but I'm assuming that if, all things being equal, with this new requirement, normally that'd be something you would have to do out of your water department to satisfy these state requirements. And in light of what's happened at the Orville Dam, I'm assuming that why this is all in there. And so, as far as these preparations, they would be exactly as I think you highlighted, Ron, that it would be more, if our dam failed, what sort of evacuation plans, et cetera, and what the impact is, and that's what we would get the money hopefully to study and prepare for.
That's correct, and we would be the lead agency, we would be the grant recipient, but it would be a multi-agency grant, mostly working with the fire protection district as well.
Yeah.
So, they would get a little, they would maybe get some funds for equipment, some things.
I would like to move on this application.
Second.
All right, we should open the hearing. If anyone here wants to speak to this authorization to go after a grant, sounds like a good idea, anyone? Nope. Then, no further discussion by the council? We will, we have a voice vote? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
You should roll for this man. It's, it's, when it's money, you should do a roll for it.
I, I, what, Jim, didn't mention that I think is an important element here. One of the things we're asking under the equipment section of this grant is to fund some, some, what do you call the, ham-operated?
Yeah, radio.
Radio systems for us to, to sort of, sort of address the experience we had during the fires. That, and this gives us a chance in, in emergency preparation, is to prepare for not just this type of emergency, but other emergencies that may happen.
Very good idea.
I'd actually like to add a comment as well. The, the Agenda summary report, unfortunately, the personnel impact, where it says no impact, that, that needs to be corrected. There would be some impact on personnel, although if we get the grant, the work done preparing for the grant and any staff work on the grant would be paid for and reimbursed by the grant. So, it's, it's just would not be accurate to say there would be no staff impact. That was, that was an error.
Okay, Jerry?
I just wanted to tell Jim that in light of the experience Orville had, that before you submit the grant, you might want to call them up just to find out what their experiences were, so maybe you could throw that in. I might make our grant a little sexier.
That's a great, that's a great.
That's always a good idea. Okay, so, I guess we might as well do a roll call vote.
Okay, council members.
A.
Yes.
Stansky. Hornstein.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm all off tonight.
I don't know, I'm not sure what the rule is.
When we need to have a roll call vote.
When in doubt, do a roll call vote.
Yeah, I think so. When you're spending city money, you need to have absolutely a roll call vote, but I think it's good practice generally to have a roll call vote, it's not routine things I could say.
Yeah, we're not actually spending money.
That said, there's no fiscal consequences.
Okay, I think that gets us through all the departments.
Madam Mayor, I think Mr. Sherman from Building, part of Community Development.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Mr. Sherman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I have some, a couple of points of good news here. Today, the city clerk received full payment from REMIF for the rodeo grounds.
Oh, great.
We're at the point where we could actually pay that bill.
That's wonderful.
You know, it's big, just, to me, it seems like it's been a long time. But we worked with REMIF, and REMIF has been very responsive. Apparently, REMIF is a partnership of a few different organizations, and like everything we do, they have to make contact with all their partners as well. So, it took a little while to get this together, but we're, we're pretty pleased with the award, and it, it pretty much matches what we asked for, so we're in pretty good shape. And one thing we discovered during the processing is that we don't have a $25,000 deductible on property damage, we have a $10,000 deductible. So, we received a little extra check over there to compensate for that misunderstanding. Another point of really, I think, positive news, today I received preliminary flood plane maps. These are the flood plane maps that we rejected last year, and FEMA's contractors have redone their calculations and reproduced, and I don't have any real examples to show you, other than I saw essentially snapshots of the five or six intense areas of flood plane expansion that happened within the city under those maps. And after our appeal, the flood plane area has gone back down to approximately where it was on the last map. So, we, we've really saved our citizens a lot of headache and a lot of money for flood insurance that the just plain didn't need. So, I think that's great. Tomorrow, I'll be attending stakeholders' meeting with FEMA to discuss flood plane issues within the county, and I will be having a couple of set aside meetings with the FEMA contractor on our maps. I'll also be having a set aside meeting with a FEMA representative to talk about, who is very familiar with this community, to talk about the grant that Jim just presented. And they understand our economic situation, they understand that there's a, there's a strong possibility that the inundation maps won't get done under their deadline if we're left to our own devices, because we simply don't have the resources to launch at this point. And I, I think I might get some advice on how to make us more competitive in that grant On with that, code activity, code enforcement activity is starting to ramp up again. I guess the winter's over and it's time to get back to it. That building permit activity is also coming back up, and it's coming back pretty good. We actually have three of the cannabis facilities that have moved into the construction phase. So, we're working, we're working with those applicants. And I have to say that Dusty did a great job of preparing these people so that when they come to us, their applications are realistic, fairly complete, they, they understand what the requirements are at this point, and they're making every attempt to comply, which is, you know, when, when this started, there was a lot of, what do we do? What do we have to do? Do we really have to do that kind of thing? I think it's all become sort of regular business now, and I for one am pleased to hear that they've gone out and hired the professionals they need to get the right answers and do the right job. I guess that's pretty much my report, other than I'm fielding a lot of requests for, where do we look for land to build some housing in this town?
John, the FEMA map thing, the flood zone thing, could you explain, we kind of touched on it the last time we brought it up, but when you say that the map has been modified to where it used to be, it almost sounds like some magic was done and just some numbers were changed. Did anything change on the ground to?
No, no. The physical reality of our watershed and our flood plain has not changed, other than natural progression.
No, what I'm asking?
Channels silt in, things like that happen.
All right, what I'm asking?
That does have an effect. But this, in this case, what had happened is, these are the first digital maps that FEMA has produced, and they used LiDAR to fly and get their information.
They used what?
And then to convert that LiDAR.
They used what?
LiDAR?
They used what?
Laser, LiDAR.
I'm asking.
Laser, aerial laser.
Okay.
To shoot the ground. And in the process of converting that 3D information that came back on their laser to 2D so that they could create two-dimensional maps, we discovered an error in their math. They call it a smoothing technique to make it easier for the computers to deal with the math. And what it actually did was eliminate, by taking all of the bumps out of our channels, they made it easy to calculate, but we lost about 20, 25% of the volume of those channels. And consequently, that, that water has to go somewhere, hydraulics, there, there's no compression in hydraulics. So, if the water can't go in the channel, it has to go somewhere else, it goes out on the banks and creates a larger flood plain, when in reality, our channels didn't lose 25% of their volume, it, it was a function of their technology. And so, they went back and they reapplied their LiDAR information, they, they studied the 3D real carefully, and then in the transition to 2D, they made sure that they didn't lose volume in those channels. And the result was our flood plains are approximately, I mean, and I can't say this, I mean, like I said, I've seen some preliminary, some preliminary maps, but there's bound, there's always change. I mean, that's why they revise the maps on a regular basis. But when we saw this last revision, we looked at it, and everybody said, wait a minute, where did all this come from? Well, we found where it came from, and we put it back there.
Okay, and my, my understanding also, when we discussed this the first time, was that some of the actual properties showed a lower elevation than they actually were, which kind of put them into a flood plain situation. Did that change at all on individual properties?
Uh, no, I don't think that did change. That being said, part of that, again, they, they have changed the datum that they use, which is basically the monument on the ground that they shoot the elevation from, and in the process of moving from one data historically to a newer, newer datum, there was a little math error in there. This is, these are, these are the points that were brought up by our hydrologist when, when we elected to go out and hire an independent hydrologist to study FEMA's figures, and that's, that's how we came up with this.
Okay, good. I mean, the point I was trying to, you know, have you put out for the public is that it's not just, you know, manipulating some numbers, this is a real deal, that the, it was found that the original numbers were calculated incorrectly, and that what they said were flood plains actually were not.
That's correct.
Good, thank you.
And that's, and that's what these preliminary maps that have come back are indicating, is that we were right when we, when we made that observation.
Really appreciate the work that you've put in to get us there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, glad we got those reports. Anything from Public Works and Engineering?
Not at this time.
Okay, so, city council and committee reports, League of California Cities.
Other than the three of us attended the League, a new council member and mayor conference in Sacramento this past week, and I enjoyed the networking opportunities. Obviously, I think we all kind of, I guess we all kind of decided it would have been better to have had it right off the chute, but it was kind of nice over there to talk to other cities. That's where I had an opportunity to talk to somebody from Orville, to see what they're going through. They're actually suing the state over their dam break, so.
And then I don't think the next league function is, the, the next league function is not till March, I believe, so.
And has the ready, do you have anything to add to that?
Oh, I can, I can wait. I have a few things that I want to share, but from the conference.
Oh, okay. All right. The Larry, MCOG?
MCOG did not meet.
Okay. EDFC met on, this is my son, January 11th, that's right after our previous meeting, and it went over a lot of the financial reports, and of course, we're glad to have Heather Irwitz coming on as the new director of EDFC. So, they have, they have money to loan, so if any of our businesses and would-be entrepreneurs out there are looking for some funding, EDFC would like to loan more money, in our community especially. So, that's the gist of that meeting. So, that's the gist of that meeting. They are going to be meeting monthly for a while. So, let me again if I agree. MSWIS, the next one, and that was me. And they have postponed the meeting that was going to be early, like February 1st. It's going to be, it's going to be February... There is it. Hmm. It's going to be soon. Ah, there it is. February 14th at 10 o'clock here. And the new general manager of MSWIS is getting very active on a lot of issues, recycling, dealing with Sharps. He's got a three-year plan covering all the different aspects of solid waste management and has hired some additional staff to carry out a pretty ambitious and aggressive program for our waste treatment, solid waste treatment in our county. So, I'm looking forward to progressing that. Next is Local Agency Formation Commission.
MTA.
Oh, I'm sorry, MTA.
Nothing, they haven't met.
Haven't met. Okay. No?
LAFCO doesn't meet until March 5th. Actually, no, February 5th.
Okay. The Finance Committee has not met since we last met here, but I guess we will, will be soon.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'll be meeting on the 8th, February 8th.
Okay. Water and wastewater, Mary?
Yes, we met. Ron?
I took notes.
Who's got the notes?
Okay.
Okay, we talked about several things. One of them was a, working on the sewer lateral ordinance. And this would be an ordinance that would cover work to be done on sewer laterals under certain conditions. And I won't go into the list of what those conditions are, but this is an important kind of thing because a lot of the sewer laterals, that is, the sewer lateral is the connection between the house and the sewer main that runs down the street. And a lot of these old laterals are old style piping that are failing and it's just not a good thing for anybody to have this condition. So, the ordinance would permit the city, and it's still being written, but it would permit the city to impose certain requirements under certain conditions. There will be, on, part of the ordinance would cover the stuff that is introduced into the sewer system, whether or not, to determine whether or not it has to be pretreated. And there will be several categories. One of them is considered, is called a industrial user special category, which means that any industrial user in town that introduces waste into the waste treatment system has to be, the effluent has to be studied, their effluent, our effluent, has to be studied in order to see what it is composed of, to determine if it has to be pretreated before it goes into the water system. And then there'll be other local specific limits that will be written into the ordinance for other than just, for, you know, for ordinary users. So, that'll be coming to us in a while. There's also the lateral cleanout inspection ordinance. And this was partially as a result of the last dance we had with Riverwatch, where we had to come up with an ordinance. Again, property owners are responsible for their lateral as it goes into the street. And sometimes they need to be replaced or, you know, just cleaned. So, one of the things that will be considered in the ordinance is to set up a loan fund. And I believe that was actually in the settlement anyway. A loan fund for people to help them to get this thing done. And again, for the benefit of the whole community. And then there's the emergency action plan that we discussed with the grant application.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On that loan fund, is that something we have budgeted for?
I think, I think that we had to budget, I forget how much the amount was, but as a result of the settlement that we made with Riverwatch, there was a sum of money that was put aside in our budget.
I believe it was $35,000.
Right. And again, this would be a loan fund. And I don't know if we actually set up the terms of it, if it's a no cost or low interest, you know, that's something that...
Madam Mayor, if I could, I think we need to take that step in terms of organizing that program and the council needs to determine how it's going to be spent and to whom.
So, will that be done at the staff level rather than the committee?
No, it'll probably be done at the council or committee level.
Yeah. I mean, they...
Obviously, it'll come back to the council for approval.
Yeah, I know that, but I just meant if the committee is going to actually try to put those, put some both together, or will the staff?
Probably a little bit of both.
Yeah. I mean, the committee, you know, we just, the committee sort of acts like a mini city council. You know, city staff is at the council, at the committee meeting. They do the grunt work and they bring it to the committee and we kind of chew it over and then bring it back to the council. So, it would be staff. And the other thing that I have here is a well completion report. This is for the second well that was drilled just south of the existing Elias well. And they ran the test, 24-hour test. They estimated the yield at about 400 gallons a minute, which is like the turnout from the Elias well. I mean, it's just, it's a gold mine. It's just phenomenal. I think other cities would kill to have this kind of water supply. And the quality of the water is being checked, it's still at the labs, but if it's the same, and I expect it would be, as the Elias well, it would be pristine. It would be very good. So, we're very fortunate to have this resource at our beck and call.
Thank you for that. All right. Revine Ed, Jerry or Sabrina?
I think we've got the phone until next Wednesday.
Yes, okay. We'll meet soon. Can I offer my comment is that I noticed on the agenda that the next one after that is like three months in the future. And I would love to have that committee meet a little more often if possible because I think revine Ed is so important right now to the community. And I'd love to see, you know, being able to move more quickly.
I think we'd like to meet more often as well.
Yeah. I think part of it is, I think they set some dates out so that we could calendar those and then, I meant to talk to Dusty, but he was out and I wasn't up to par.
Okay. Well, we'll write that up at the committee meeting.
Great. Thank you. Ad-hoc committees, Caltrans has not met, but is going to very shortly.
We're in the process of scheduling that, Madam Mayor. I believe I had sent an email out. I think it was March 1st is, as I recall.
So, this is basically coordinating with Caltrans regarding the whole relinquishment project and how things are going to go. So, that's great. I don't believe there have been any meetings of the JPA feasibility study for the wastewater treatment plant or for the Little Lake Fire District.
Madam Mayor, on that, if I could, the Fire District has appointed its two members. We have our two members. The two members appointed by the Fire District are Tony Madrigal and Arnie...
Miller.
Yes. And in discussing with the chief, it sounds like Thursday nights are the best night to meet. So, I wanted to discuss that with the committee members and see which Thursday night in February they might be available for a meeting.
That will be myself and Larry Stransky, I believe.
I think it's Jerry and Ron.
Jerry and Ron, you're right.
Bob, could I get with you tomorrow?
Sure.
Jerry and Ron.
You want to throw some dates out and maybe email?
Do it by email?
Sure.
Okay. Great. And now we are at the Museum Advisory Board, Sabrina and also the Tourism Board.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to your attention that I had requested, after some advice from our attorney, that we release these last two boards to other community boards and committees because they're not appoint, these boards are, the people who are appointed on this board, which happens to be myself, is not appointed by the City Council. And that's important as it pertains to the Brown Act. So, I just wanted to disclose that.
I think that's a good change. And also, there's a, could be a perception in the public that these are in fact city committees and they're not. And they are other committees that we're interested in.
Yes. All right. So, first the Museum Advisory Board. I reported to you last time that I had some concerns. You may have recently seen an article that was written about the museum. I have some sense that we're going to receive some news soon from the Board of Supervisors about some changes that hopefully will be positive, but there's nothing to report that's fact about that, other than the fact that Karen Mattson is the new curator at the museum. And she worked for the library previously and just is very energetic and knowledgeable. And so, I think she has a lot to offer the museum. And then I want to remind those people in our community that haven't gone to the museum recently, that there are some wonderful things on display there. I think one of the things, when you first walk in the door and you look to the left, is the veterans, the veterans' display. And just looking at that is very emotional and really instills a pride and you think about the sacrifice of those, you know, recently we've had, I had an opportunity to march and thinking about the democratic right to be able to march and have a say. And when I go to the museum, it's those people who lay down their life for us to have the freedoms that we have here in this country. So, I'm very aware of that and appreciative. So, if you haven't gone to check that out at the museum, do. There's some wonderful art on display from the natives. I know a lot of people come to our area to see about sea biscuit. And they've got a short video there and some other things. And then just our local heritage, if you want to see some things from our past.
Is the Main Street then and now still up?
Yes. And Main Street then and now, if you have not gone to see it, go see it because I do believe that that is going to change soon.
It's an excellent presentation.
Yeah. On your previous point about moving the advisory board under other committee things, I, you know, I really think that that should be, that should be under the City Council committees because the City Council does fund the museum to some degree every year. And this is an important part of our city, as you know, not just financially, but also because it's the county museum in our town. So, it seems to me that it's important enough that it should be listed under the City Council and Committee Reports.
I know that it's an appointment by the Board of Supervisors, but in talking to our attorney, his advice was to move the museum.
Well, it is under, under the heading number 10, City Council Committee Reports, but by adding this new language in parentheses, that alerts the public to know that this is not an official City Council Committee. It's the committee of an agency that's independent of the city.
Okay, I get that. You know, there is a distinction there and I understand that and I appreciate that. But I guess what I'm trying to point out is that this is an important function.
The reason also that I gave this advice is that if this City Council appoints any of its members to sit on those other non-city boards or commissions, and if that City Council representative is a full voting member, and should the city thereafter fund the operations of those other agencies, then those other agencies can be subject to the Brown Act. And it's just something that those other agencies should be aware of. And if you're going to appoint one of your members to sit on that committee, it could subject that committee to a Brown Act requirement if you also then fund their operations.
They're not also, they're not already subject to the Brown Act?
Well, I don't know about the Willets Tourism Board.
Well, not that. No, I'm not talking about that one. I know that's a whole different one about, I'm just looking at the museum.
Certainly the museum.
And I believe the museum board consists of a lot of other elected officials, correct? Or several, or some?
There are no other elected officials.
I think the one you're thinking of, Ron, is the library board used to be.
No, no, no. I'm thinking of this one.
There are currently no other elected officials on the Museum Advisory Boards.
Okay.
And each person who sits on the Museum Advisory Board is appointed by the board of supervisors.
Okay. All right, all right. I winch roll.
Yeah. And we, our contribution to the museum is not enough to run that, to run the museum. It's really a county's responsibility. I mean, any more than, for example, the senior senator, we give them money, but we don't, you know, we don't subject them to the Brown Act. Okay, so now we're going to...
To the Visit Tourism Board.
Yes.
So, the Visit Tourism Board, again, is a community bordered board. We're in the process of becoming, of submitting our articles of incorporation, our bylaws, and becoming a 501(c)(3). And so, our executive committee, which comprised of myself as the chair, Ally from the chamber as the vice chair, Matthew Kane as the secretary, and Jen Rodriguez as the CFO, we met, we put together our bylaws and articles of incorporation. Then today, we had a meeting here at City Hall at 11:00 a.m. and refined those and approved many of the things that we needed to move forward. And then we had a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaks, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and went through and figured out, what is our vision? What is our purpose? How do we want to best serve Willets? And the Tourism Board isn't just focused on bringing tourists from out of the area here. Obviously, that is part of it, but it's really a large component of it, is enhancing the experience that the people who are, that are living here, enhancing their own experience here. For example, if you live here, you may not know where all the hiking trails are. So, being able to create a resource, maybe a local magazine where we can give out that information, things like that. And we're, the next meeting is set for the third, our week meetings will always be the third Wednesday of the month at 4:00 p.m. It's open to the public. And at the following meeting, we'll select specific projects that will, that will serve our purpose that I just stated. And I'm happy to bring that back to the board and let you know what projects we're going to be moving forward with. We're in particular going to be looking for a signature event, something that, for example, the rodeo is something that happens every year. And we're looking to find a new signature event for Willets, maybe at a different time of year to attract visitors and enhance the experience with the locals.
I have a question. The remainder of the amount that the city allocated to the chamber to do more internet marketing for our community and really try to have someplace where passersby could go online and say, "Oh, wow, there's these events happening, there's these shops, there's all these attractions here in Willets." And that internet marketing sort of, I guess with, when Lynn Kennely passed away, that sort of went on the back burner. And I'm hoping that the Tourism Board and/or the chamber are picking up that project.
So, we made a motion to receive a $5,000 lump of money from the chamber, but the money is not connected to the $5,000 that was the remainder of what the city had given because we cannot connect the two. It's up to the chamber to explain to the city how the funds were spent and whatever agreement that, I'm not, to be honest, I don't have a copy of that original agreement. I wasn't on the board when you gave the Chamber of Commerce that $10,000. And what did you expect clearly from them in return and what you were going to do to follow up on it? So, that would be something you'd have to discuss with the chamber. But the chamber has made a contribution to the Willets Tourism Board because we share the same, the same common goal. And so, it was appropriate for them to make the donation.
So, the Tourism Board is going to be working on that project?
Yes, their board passed it. And today, our board also passed a motion to receive it.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. So, accounting problem, but other than that, okay.
I think that you need to go back to the contract that you had with the chamber because I wasn't fully to let me have.
Any other comments? And if not, we are now... And if not, we are now on council member reports and recommendations. Yes, Larry?
First of all, I would like to thank Dusty for the really nice map on the subdivision project that he submitted. For once, I could tell where it was. Thank you. Thank Dusty. I would like to thank Bob for handling the other side of the street, the Main Street, from the high school to Highway twenty, to tell the people that they were going to cut some trees down. And there were people that didn't have a clue, no matter what it said in the paper, they didn't know. I wanted the three people that were possibly out of town this week to know that the city ran wonderful with the rest of us that were here, okay? And the next thing is, just for food for thought, we, we have a forestry plan that might take hold in a little bit, and that's in the water fund. And you might think about that with hooking up the second well. It's all in the same fund. Thank you.
Other council member reports?
Yes. So at our Visit Tourism meeting today, their district supervisor, Georgie Ann Kroski, was there, and she asked me to pass on to the community that there is going to be an ad hoc committee meeting for the second access on March fifth at six p.m. at the community center. So I'd like to get the word out there that all are invited.
This community center or Bertrand Center?
I think it's this community center.
Yeah, I got the impression it was this one as well. And then the second thing is, is that I enjoyed attending the League of California Cities Conference as well. We had the opportunity to meet lots of council members from all over the state, from small cities to big cities. It was very beneficial. There were times when it was information that we already knew, but then there were lots of other new things that we learned. And I think one of, what I'd like to share with you is, we attended, on the last day of the conference, we attended an ethics, an ethics class, which is required by law, and they thought it important. And we also disclosed to the community, so you know that we did take ethics training. And it was very helpful and insightful to know what the, the latest dues and jumps are. And one of the things that I took away from that meeting was that when we have community meetings during the, the council member comments, the legal strongly advised that we start disclosing, if we're not already disclosing meetings that we have in the community with people that could potentially impact our decision on the council for either current or future agenda items. And so that, I started thinking about like, who have I met within the community and how I disclose those? And I think sometimes we talk about it, but I think I'm going to make more of a conscious effort. And so in disclosing that, I know that we have an item before us about the Molokol Park and potential changes. And I've met with some of the residents, and then I do have a meeting tomorrow with Abe Baragati.
Okay.
And just to hear the park's perspective. And so I wanted to put that out there. And.
Well, regarding that League of Cities Conference that we were just at, the, probably the thing I was most impressed with was how much the League does to represent all of the cities in the state. And their legislative topic area people are so sharp. They're, they review hundreds of bills and find every place where cities are either benefited or being, you know, threatened by having authority or finances taken away. And they do just an incredible job lobbying on our behalf. So that was probably my highlight, was hearing from all of those lobbyists at the League of Cities. Yes, Jerry?
Oh, I just wanted to add on that, that our local representative is Sarah Rounds, who, who sends us, you know, to the city, to our city manager, to, to be as the league representative. And usually, she's the one that, some, some things that have come before us on the council regarding, I think the most notable one that, where they were trying to pass a law that would allow cell phone companies to put up these refrigerator-sized cell towers in neighborhoods.
Everything.
They wanted to basically not let cities lose that local control. And so those sort of things come up, and it's important to be part of the League and to network. Sometimes what's happening at Willets is also happening somewhere else. And it gives us a voice throughout the state and to know that we're not standing alone.
It felt good to, to be part of a larger discussion when we went to the conference. Like Jerry said, sometimes we're in Willets and we're talking about Willets issues, and we were able to look at some of the issues that we face all across the state, from small cities to big cities. So that was definitely.
And we were not the smallest city there.
We were not.
There were several smaller cities than us. And a big city.
And Jerry and I, I'm not sure if you were in the room match, because we, we did our best not to sit together, talk too much at the conference, but we attended an early morning session about public safety in general, and we found that very informative, too. There were lots of different topics at the conference.
They even talked about social media in this day and age, and obviously the pitfalls that come with that, and being careful. I mean, you know, one thing could mean a tweet, this was a nice thing I went to, but for me to tweet, city council, you know, I can't really speak for everybody when I tweet. And it's important for us to realize that when we're on social media, that we not, we may only be representing our individual thought as opposed to the, the whole city as a whole.
That did get a lot of discussion, the whole application of the Brown Act to use of social media, because we're not allowed to meet with more than two of us at any meeting other than in public and public notice and agendized items, all that. And when you go on any of the social media, you might in fact inadvertently be having a meeting, because two or three others of us may check the same site.
They use Facebook.
Whether or not they offer an opinion, doesn't matter if you offer an opinion. If, if I state an opinion and two or three other council members go on that site and see my opinion, we have just collectively violated the Brown Act. So they set a lot of caution on what you put out there on, on media.
What about if you write a letter to the editor?
I think.
That's, it came under more of a free speech issue.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, if, if two or three others of us started responding to a letter to the editor from one of us, I think that would start getting us in trouble.
Actually, they said that was a, they said that was a.
They call that a daisy chain kind of.
They said that that was a gray area, Ron, because potentially you're sharing your voice outside the council chambers, which could potentially impact a decision. So they, they said that we should abstain from it. But of course, legal had a lot to say. And they were, and they were very, very conservative. They said that we should push out information about where meetings are taking place, and after a meeting happens, giving out facts. For example, we met this evening, and this is what we passed, but to, to do our best to abstain from giving our opinions on social media or otherwise.
I think the important thing is to separate the politician from the facts. I mean, I, I think here where we have our city manager, our clerk, put out what happened at the meeting is probably the best way, as opposed to any one of us that could be accused of furthering our own political agenda, that is, is a good way.
Okay, so I think we don't have any ordinances to enact this evening. Any good and welfare that haven't already been brought up?
Rotary had a crab feed, and I understand they're going to be selling some more crabs, so Rotary's a good cause.
That's right.
Save your appetite for some more crab that they'll be selling downtown.
All right. And we do not have a closed session tonight, so at eight thirty, I am calling this meeting adjourned.